Okay. Yes, we're five after. Thanks, everybody for being here. We'll go ahead and do a roll call. Do one thing right here. I can see what I'm doing. Let's see, we'll go ahead and start in the room. My name is Kelly Sheen. I'm the district manager of the Trinity County Resource Conservation District and part of the Trinity Collaborative Facilitation Team, and I'm going to pass to my left.
Hey, everyone. My name is Monique, and I work at the Shasta Trinity National Forest as the Forest Partnership Coordinator. I'll pass it to Jerry.
Jerry Cousins, collaborative member.
Jill Cox, Board of Supervisors. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone, and Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Yeah, Tara Jones, District Ranger for the West Side of Shasta Trinity National Forest.
Good morning, everyone. Jim Spear, co-facilitator here for the Trinity Collaborative.
And I will call out people as I see them on Zoom. Bob Morris.
Good morning.
Larry?
Hi, Larry Glass, representing Safe.
And the Trinity Collaborative. Susan?
Susan Malino, public member, collaborative.
Is Ross with you this morning, Susan?
He may be in and out.
Okay. Thank you, Susan. Arnold?
Arnold Ridge, collaborative member.
Very good. Thanks, Arnold. I have a Kay Anderson.
That's Kevin.
Oh, that's Kevin.
Yeah, Kevin Anderson with Lord West, just here to, you know, ask, answer any questions if you guys have any about the camera applications that we have in process.
Awesome. Thanks for being on the call, Kevin. Appreciate that. Joe?
Good morning, everyone.
Brian and Joe Miller. Good morning. Tree River Lumber Company.
Hey, Brian Taylor also. Thanks for joining us, gentlemen. Jim? Jim Dees?
Yeah, good morning. Sorry, I am multitasking here. Somehow I got assigned to multiple calls at the same time. And they were already apologizing on the other call for having booked over you guys. But I got it worked out. Bronson's going to take notes on the other meeting, and I'm going to take notes here. And I'm really here just to be a fly on the wall and represent Kristen anyway, but I will try to pay attention and take notes so I can bring her up to speed when she gets back on Monday.
Thank you, Jim. Yes, I received an email from Kristen that she wouldn't be able to attend, but was going to try to have somebody on the call. So thanks for being with us, Jim.
Yep, yep.
Uh, and Jeanette?
Yeah, Jeanette Taff from Hay Fork. I'm running for supervisor, but I'm very interested in the subject, and I want to become informed, so I'm here to listen.
Okay, very good. Thank you for joining us this morning. Chris?
Hi, I'm Chris Cole. I'm the district conservationist for the Natural Resource Conservation Service. Morning, everybody.
Morning. Christine?
Good morning, everyone. This is Christine Jordan from the Fish and Wildlife Service up in Wyrika, and Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, Christine. Thanks for joining us. Bethany?
Good morning, Bethany Llewellyn, Forest Health Program Manager at Trinity County RCD.
And it looks like everybody on Zoom call at the moment, and I do see that we have two new attendees here in the, in the room. All right, thank you. And I think that's all that I can see.
Good, Kelly. Thank you very much. All right. Well, good morning, everyone. Great to see everybody. Great turnout this morning. Hard to believe it's been two months already since we last gathered. So again, good to see everybody. We've got a full agenda ahead of us, but wanted to just do an agenda check to see if there's any time sensitive issues. Jerry, you have your hand up? Yeah, I'd just like to ask everybody, maybe this weekend, wherever you're at, whatever you're drinking, wine, beer, whiskey, raise a glass to our dear brother Larry Winters, who passed away just before the winter solstice. So just get a good memory of this. Very good. Thank you, Jerry.
Yeah, thank you, Jerry.
Yeah. Okay, anything we need to adjust on our agenda before we launch? Not so. I do see a good hand.
Uh, nope, that's the white one is.
That is it. Yeah, the white one doesn't matter. All right. Um, minutes, collective memory, any adjustments there needed? Any comments on the minutes from last meeting? Not seeing any. Very good.
Uh, one thing that I did want to bring up with regard to the minutes, collective memory. I understand that there was a discussion about the semantics of calling them collective memory. And I don't know if that's something that we feel like we should just continue is, I was under the impression that they were considered such or called that within the charter, if I'm not mistaken.
I just talked with Marla and she said she should be collected transcript.
Okay, well, I didn't. I mean, you know, they are pretty, they're. So, so, I don't know, if there's any need to, I guess, revisit whether we wanted to rename them or if collective memory is good, mom?
Collective memory is okay with me because it helps our memories.
Okay. All right. Well, I think, I think Marla may have taken that a little bit seriously. So she brought it up, okay?
She's doing a great job.
We appreciate the effort she's putting into those, yeah. Okay, fair enough. One other thing regarding.
These take it serious.
Okay. Uh, one other thing that we had discussed with the Rec Committee and, and then like internally, we we understand that there's frequently things that we need to, you know, like action items that come up, you know, and, and we want to be reporting out on, you know, accomplishing action items, things that are asked of us, things that are asked of the agencies. And so in the Rec Committee meeting, Laura Bradshaw with the BLM had requested that we actually bring up kind of action items, you know, as a sort of first item of order of business within the actual minutes. So that the agency folks can know, you know, like if there's something that's being requested of them from the last meeting that they need to address at the next meeting. So our intent is to actually be tracking those to be, when those things come up, that we'll list them out for the minutes, so action items for the next meeting from, for, from a set of, you know, minutes from last time. And, you know, and then whatever we've accomplished or completed as we're moving forward. So those things will be noted in subsequent minutes as we're moving forward. Just wanted to bring that up.
And those minutes then would come out earlier.
And that we would be putting out the minutes earlier.
In the agenda.
In the, uh, well, agenda maybe, but for sure, we, we've been getting the actual minutes, the minutes and notes and collective memories completed sort of within approximately a couple of weeks of the actual meetings, so we can get those out sooner, so that especially the agency folks, if they need to, if they need to rally, you know, staff, or if they need, you know, if they've got things that they need to follow up on, that they'll be having those in hand, so that there isn't any lost, anything lost in translation between make, meet, meetings, just because of the fact that there's a couple a month that goes by, and sometimes, sometimes we know that I've been getting them out a little bit on the later side, so it's not good to give, you know, anybody like just a couple of days or a week even, sometimes, you know, notice, sometimes it means a little bit more time. So that's the intent.
True about collaborative members and other members who say, oh, yeah, I'll follow up with that. I'll have a meeting just to make sure that things are happening.
Yeah, the intent would be basically like who the action item is geared towards and what the, a brief description of what is being requested of them. Um, so we will, we will endeavor to make that a consistent part of, of our, our minutes and meeting notes as we're moving forward. There is a hand. Arnold Litridge?
I was thinking along those lines, the, the minutes have turned into a transcript uh, of 21 pages, and it's not very convenient, I don't think. It's not, it's not useful, it's not useful for people for a quick review. It's, it might be appreciated by historians, but I would vote for more concisements. Hitting the high points and not writing down every word that was said in two hours.
Okay, I was under the impression that it was, we had been requested that it be more detailed because the collaborative members want to know exactly what people said at any given meeting. Yes. Not just vague ideas about how, you know, that was, that was our understanding, was that we were, we were doing them in detail to take of austerity. So is there, is there a discussion that we should have about that?
Sounds like it.
Sounds like Tara should talk less. Say less. I cannot help you with that. I will talk less.
Everybody else? Larry, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I, I think, I remember what you're talking about. The early version of the minutes was too sparse, and it, there were opinions of the note taker that were of what was important and what wasn't. So some important discussions got the short shrift, and then other things got too much. So I think there's a happy medium between recording every single word and what we did a long time ago. So that'd be my input.
Okay, and anybody else?
Any other comments there? Happy medium going once? Going twice? There's still, I mean, I, I guess I, I agree with Larry's comment there, though, that anytime you're going to ask someone to take kind of the verbatim and translate that into some summation or some, you know, lesser communication, there, there will be some editorializing going on there. It's just another thought of how you can get away from that. You know, but, but I think, you know, Marla, who types them up, is not part of, she's just listening. So somebody. Somebody else would have to do that. I agree. To convince it. More than likely, Kelly and I.
It's not going to be me.
So it sounds like me. So anyways, I'm just suggesting that if we go the happy medium route, you know, you're going to have to trust that my editorializing is, you know, fair and objective.
It's also good motivation to attend the meetings.
Yeah, there you go.
Well, Jim, what you could do maybe is do like a headline version, like they do the full transcript, and then you just go through it and pull out the the topics that got discussed, and if people want to know more about it, then they go to the full transcript.
There we go. Okay, yeah, I like that. We would, those transcripts would be available if anyone wanted to dig further, but yeah, we, we could all, we would just put out to the collaborative kind of that, that summation, you know, some of that, like that concept.
Can you make both available?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
Yeah. That would be okay. Okay, sounds good.
Okay, anything else on minutes? Public input? Seeing any? So good lead in, Kelly, to our first item here. This was my attempt to kind of create this action register, if you will, follow up items from prior meeting. We'll probably come up with a more, I don't know, professional title there, come, come next time. But this was, this was the gist of this first agenda item. And I don't know if you recall, but at the end of our last meeting, Jerry did raise a question regarding a proposal that has kind of surfaced maybe a couple of meetings ago. So rather than trying to put words in Jerry's mouth, I'm going to have Jerry elaborate on your interest in having this item discussed. So you recall that conversation, Jerry? Well, I think it's a little bit of a misinterpretation. I was talking more about what Kelly was saying, just kind of a follow up. Well, this is a, this is a more specific proposal that came up. Was, it had been suggested about written reports. Right. Prior to the meeting, specifically, especially from agencies. Correct, but it's kind of independent, though, from kind of this follow up item. I think what you were suggesting is that maybe those that, that do have regular presentations on our agendas, rather than just provide an oral report that they would provide a written report in advance of the meeting that would go out with the agenda. Or not? It was one of the things on the list of files. It was. That's all. Do you want to? No, don't do it. I mean. So you're satisfied with kind of what we have agreed to? Previously. We agreed to that. Is there a written report going to happen? Okay, so discussion open. Anyone want to weigh in on this discussion?
It was my understanding that that puts a pretty heavy onus on our agency.
Kristen said that right off. She couldn't do it.
Yeah.
So you can't, you can't.
Yeah, so I think what it evolved into was whether if there was, if there was a lack of presence at the meeting from any given, and, you know, agency or entity, that there, you know, that the, in lieu of that, there would be some sort of written report.
I think you alluded to that in your, when you said the agenda out this floor.
Yeah.
Unable to make the meeting.
That was, that was my understanding. I mean, Tara, what do you think?
I typically, though I, I have not followed through the last couple of times, typically my Board of Supervisors update, I provide to them in writing, um, at least until November and December. But, uh, I can, when I, when I write those up, I can turn around and flip those to, to you guys as well. So instead of having to do um, a separate one for you guys, I can certainly email, uh, I don't think there's anything, there's nothing there that you guys couldn't know. I mean, it's the same thing I, I briefed out in public anyway, so um, I can totally just send that to you guys. That's not, it's not a problem for me at all, and I'm already doing it. Okay, so I'll just, if I can send it to just you and you can send out to the group, that'll be fine.
Okay.
But you should still, if you want to get all the facts, you should tune into the Board of Supervisors meetings.
Yeah.
They do.
I think most people do because I, I've met a lot of new friends from watching the videos. But I can, I can send you that report, but it's not a big deal for me just because I'm already doing it.
Bob, you have a comment?
Yes, it seems unfair to ask the folks to submit a written, if they're going to be at the meeting. It seems what Kelly alluded to, of only if they're not going to make the meeting. That makes a lot more sense to me.
Okay. Anybody else?
I want to just check my perception of something real quick.
Sure.
Um, I prioritize these meetings and tend to skip some other meetings to, to be at these ones. Um, so I just want, I, I have, don't send actings very often at all. Um, with the exception of maybe when I was six. So, uh, just understand that if it is a priority for me to be at these meetings and, and uh, one thing about folks in Trinity County that's really consistent is they don't, they want the ranger to be in the meeting. So um, if, if I'm not here, it's not, it's not because it's not a priority. I mean, if I send an acting, I usually try to make sure they have, like Monique has a briefing from Sarah, we try to make sure they have what they need to be successful. Um, they, if there's really difficult questions that are going to put them in a hot spot or whatever, um, you know, if you want to just get ahold of me and, and I'll, I'll take those on. So just want you guys to know, I prioritize being here to the extent that I can be. Um, but there's a funny thing is everyone wants me to be in their meeting, so just, just keep that in mind, and I, and I really do try to be here. And I think Sarah does as well. So.
That is much appreciated, Tara. Thank you very much. Yeah.
Well, I think that and the actings are, are busy. I've got them doing things that are important as well, so.
Okay, well, I think to wrap this one up, then I, I don't know that we want to make this a requirement, you know, so if, if if you've got a written report that you're willing to share in advance of, of the meeting, we'll take it. But in, in lieu of, you know, some of the resistance that we've already heard from others, we'll, we'll, we'll just make this optional uh, and, and certainly put a priority on it if you're unable to make it or unable to have an acting, a representative speaking on your behalf. Sound good?
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, December 15th, field tour report discussion. There you want to?
Sure, um, want to start off by, it was a, a little bit chilly, so I appreciate everyone kind of sticking with it. I really, really want to, uh, thank Carol Fall and the Volunteer Fire Department up there for providing us a warm, safe haven for lunch. That was really appreciated. Um, I was thrilled. Christine, thank you so much for, and Fish Wildlife Service for joining us on that trip. It really helped to get out and see Bowerman and as well as, uh, the potential, well, the project's going to be North Trinity County. Uh, so just to make sure we're on the same page, the North Trinity County uh, community risk reduction is the Highway Three project, so don't, don't let that confuse you.
Could you repeat that one more time?
Sure, North Trinity County community risk reduction. And we're trying to, the naming convention, you may wonder why that naming convention for projects that we're doing under the landscape, the wildfire crisis landscape, we're trying to have a um, a naming convention that makes it clear that that project falls under that landscape. So that's why that, how's that named? Um, appreciated the good, the good dialogue. I think we really hit on some of the, some of the areas where we're consistent, where we have a lot of agreement, and some of the areas that we're just going to have to work through um, as a group. I thought the feedback participation was, was really good. I was a little bummed we didn't have time to get up to the uh, cooperative fuel break that we're looking to put in with SPI. So if you have any questions about that, please let me know. Um, you know, where it's kind of the, we literally put in fire lines on the deep fire um, that crossed SPI and onto National Forest System lands and then back to SPI. And, uh, you know, staying, looking at that landscape, Keith and I looked at it, and, and we think that's a great place to, to put in a fuel break that crosses those same ownerships. Uh, Rachel Burkey also went out and took a look at it when she was over here after one of the Board of Supervisors meetings. So uh, that, that will be included in that North Trinity County project. Um, it was a good day. I got a lot of good feedback. You guys are, never fail to be engaged, and I appreciate your communications, and, and they're open and transparent, and that just helps me make better informed decisions.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Sarah's on here. Monique, are you?
Yes. Okay. Um, here, let me go ahead and share. Oh, I have a presentation because it helps me share information a little bit better. I will do that. Okay.
Monique is breaking the curve because she has a presentation. At one time, she sat in for Sarah, so don't.
Well, my help. And then if anyone has any questions, so I'm sharing out for Sarah Akeridge for the National Recreation Area Management Unit. And if somebody has a question that I can't answer, or Tara doesn't have more information on, then I'll be happy to write it down. Um, I'll also be covering the Minersville Boat Ramp update during that time. Is that all right? Okay. Okay, so we go. So I'm just going to start with the Minersville Boat Ramp because that's the order that I have it on there, but there we go. So we have an organization called TEPA. I pronounced their name wrong at the recreation subcommittee meetings, but we have a contractor named TEPA, which is a privately owned engineering service to complete the boat ramp engineering design. Um, there were some questions around who was completing that contract for engineering, and so I'm sharing with you all that information.
Where is that company based?
Sacramento.
Sacramento.
They have a couple different places, but Sacramento's a close one. Yeah. Um, and TEPA, so how they're doing it is they're completing the engineering designs at 30%, and then getting a review from Department of Boating Waterways or DEBOW. And then they get another review at 60%, and then another review at 90%, and then 100%. So they just got their first review on their 30% engineering designs. Um, and that passed the Department of Boating and Waterways expect, expectations for that. So now they're moving along to completing 60% of that boat ramp design. Um, and they do this completion, and they come out to the boat ramp to survey and discuss the design. Um, although they are based out of Sacramento. Um, so with that being said, we do have funding for this project until February 1st. Um, we are able to receive amendments to the incoming funds agreements to extend that if needed. Um, but right now, that's the date that we have funding for.
First of this year?
February 1st of 2025.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and there isn't a concern of funding running out, but I did hear at the recreation subcommittee meeting that there were concerns of funding not being enough. But we don't know how much the, the project is going to cost until the engineering designs are complete. And so once those designs are complete, then we'll have a better understanding of the full boat ramp cost. Um, and once we have that full boat ramp cost, then at that point, um, we'll very likely have another meeting with DEBOW if it, if it could be covered, because right now it's 4.85 million dollars that was received uh, to complete that project, but because it has been a while, um, and inflation could have infected the prices of completing the design. So at that stage, um, we'll be able to have a discussion with DEBOW and see what, what else is needed, if, if more is needed.
The Rec Committee has strongly suggested that they attempt to make this a phased, take a phased approach to actually completion of the project, which might help a little bit with the funding, uh, by, because obviously the boat ramp's the most important piece of this. Um, but the, the other major portion of it is the parking area that they want to put above the waterline. And, um, there's some concern that that, uh, if they, if they have to take it as an entire package, that it may not happen, or they may not have enough funding to complete the entirety of the project, and that the, that the most important aspect of it is getting the actual boat ramp itself.
Yeah, and so I, I also got more information on that, and, um, when receiving these grants from Department of Boating and Waterway, um, they have a requirement in their boat ramp, uh, projects to have a parking lot included. Um, and that parking lot initially could have been below waterline, but because of potential hazardous material entering into the water, it had to be above waterline. Um, and so the, the parking lot is still a requirement, and so doing the phased approach without the parking lot would pose issues, but if the water is high one year, they can do a phased approach to, to still completing the boat ramp. So the, the parking lot, um, I got more information, and it is a requirement, um, with the current. Yeah, yeah, of, of DEBOW. Yeah.
Who is the funder?
DEBOW. Yeah, yeah, yes. Yeah, so you have to follow those rules. Yeah.
So they can't be separated?
No, no. Um, and so they, they do have design plans to include a parking lot above that waterline. That's, yeah, part of the, the design completion.
And is it true that that parking lot has to hold 25 vehicle trailer components?
Oh, I'll have to, that, I'll have to get back at, but they did do the minimum requirement because DEBOW did go to survey the site as well, um, and they recognized the complications of having a parking lot there. Um, so they, they did say that they're going to require the, the most minimal amount of parking spaces that they can, but I'll have to check how many.
Okay, because if it was going to be that number, I'm just curious where they plan to put it. And there was some discussion at one point that, I don't remember the name of the campground, it's just up from there.
It might just land it out. Yeah.
Okay, and something else on the side, but whatever it is. Yeah, that's it. And there was some discussion that perhaps some of the parking that's available there could be included as meeting the the minimum requirement. So I'm just curious and you'll find that out when you when you ask this question.
Yeah, I will have to find that out. But yeah, it could, the parking spaces, because there's limited space, it could impact some of the lower camping spaces. So they could either use those parking spaces or use some of the sites as well, but yeah.
One of the other issues that came up with regard to the parking situation that the that the recommend was pretty vehemently against was back end parking that they, you know, that they wanted to, I mean, the only useful parking for trailers like that is full through parking. And that also impacts like the size of the space needed, et cetera, et cetera. So you know, you can look at like I can't remember the name, but Clark Springs, Clark Springs is a good example of that, where you've got basically like individual parking spaces, but then all of the the actual trailer parking spaces are full through parking spaces and enough space to be able to turn around and, you know, position the backing and parking is is not as desirable. So just throwing that out there because that was something that came up when you were talking about it earlier.
Okay, so just bring up that full through parking is preferred?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I will.
If you're wanting to increase the utility of the parking parking in that area, that's that's going to be essential.
Okay. I will let, I will let them know. Yeah, thank you. Does anyone have any questions on on that? Okay, we we can do a go back if if so. And moving along, so another question that was received was regarding Trinity camps. And what I shared at the recreation collaborative meeting is that the section one oh six was completed as of last week. And so a decision memo for a categorical exclusion is expected to now be completed by spring of this year. I think that's good news. In addition, Sarah wanted me to share that they are working on hiring a new interpretive specialist for the NRA and they're expected to be starting hopefully pretty soon. But she wanted me to share that along. So that's good news. And then last, I have a big update on the CCI grant, the California Climate Investment Grants from CAL FIRE that came down. And this is, this is probably an RCD shareout too, but Forest Service has been working with the RCD to submit this grant proposal, which was due last week. So this proposal is for Northern Trinity County Forest Resilient Partnerships Phase Two project, and that was all completed and submitted. So that grant includes a couple of different projects for different areas are included, two of them on National Forest System lands that includes the the areas for treatment of Trinity camps and the Bowerman Fuel Break. So if this is awarded, it would allow us to do an additional or to treat the remaining thirteen hundred acres of land between those areas and efforts to create more healthy and resilient forest landscapes. Again, this is just to, those are just two project components and there's four components in total, and those are on adjacent private lands. And on the main project objectives for this is to increase forest health and resilience, reduce wildfire risk and improve habitat conditions and watershed health and protect human values such as community safety and recreation.
I could I ask Bethany Llewellyn, our Forest Health Program Manager to add a little bit more detail to that since we're talking about it? And she she was the one that coordinated the the proposal, which was kind of a combined effort. But do you want to speak to that, Bethany, please?
Yeah, I can add a little bit about the private land components. I think that's important. One of them is with Sierra Pacific. It's a project we've been looking for funding for for a while. That includes roadside work along Bowerman Ridge. So some of those private land components mixed into the the Forest Service components, the collaborative fuel break there, as well as some of the other high priority SPI roads in the North Lake. So some of the trailhead access roads and some other ones that are kind of intermixed with big Forest Service projects. And then the other component was a few small kind of high priority private land pieces, including roadside work in Ridgeville and a small fuel break next to the Lake Forest Estates. And the total came in at about six point one million. And as Monique said, we just got that application in last week. It's a big collaborative effort with us, the Watershed Center, and a lot of help from the wildfire crisis strategy team at the Forest Service. So we expect to hear back from CAL FIRE likely late summer, early fall.
Thank you, Bethany. Good job.
Okay, I am going to stop sharing now. Those are all the updates I have for today. And then with regarding Trinity County Resource Advisory Committee project proposals, we're hoping to start voting on those projects in March to get some of those projects recommended to the Forest Service for for funding.
Thank you, Monique.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments from Monique? Is there a full wrath season now?
There is a quorum. Yeah, there's a quorum. This is good enough. Yeah. And then we can do majority voting now. Yeah. Yes, it is now.
Okay, not seeing any questions, comments. I'm going to circle back just to that field tour. Tara kind of opened that one up, but I didn't see, I don't know if there was any other participants on the tour that wanted to comment, give feedback. Give opportunity there. Arnold, I see the hand.
Oh.
Are you speaking, Arnold? If you are, you're muted.
Still muted. I'm getting ready to speak.
There we go.
You're warming up. Well played, sir.
All right. You're on.
We had the the collaborative sent Joseph and me and Jim Spear on the on the tour. I thought it was a terrific turnout from the Forest Service and the and other agencies, RCD, Fish and Wildlife Service. The staff who had been thinking about it, working on it, were very interested and soaking up a lot of info. I think we, everyone agreed that there's way too many trees in most places up there. Joseph and I thought that that the landscape used to have a lot more oak component or hardwood component than it does now. The main thing I wanted to say was as all the staff, people, agency people were trying to get their heads around it, they were quite receptive to or quite interested in the the collaboratives approach that's set to be demonstrated some year in our pilot project on the Shasta T. But they, it was very difficult for them to find or to understand or to grapple with the project design except by using basal area or canopy cover. So I talked to a number of them individually and and told them that the the fuel break work group and the collaborative have had a very difficult time designing a satisfactory project or feeling their project would be satisfactory if it if it was designed to a basal area, a remaining basal area or residual canopy cover. Some individuals, many of us can imagine how to do it, but we can't agree with other people. Some people can't imagine how to do it right. So I'm just alerting this meeting that it's a, it's an old problem. It's an ongoing problem. It hasn't been solved yet. People are not exactly resistant to our idea, but they, you know, the agencies need and feel they must have measurable deliverables and and it's hard for them to, it's just continuing to be hard for them to come to terms with a prescription without using basal area and canopy cover. So we all got to keep thinking about how to how to get where we all want to go without veering off into some old fashioned problems. That's it.
Thank you, Arnold.
I'm still not muted.
So I see the the problem is the constant revolving door of employees at the Forest Service. Once we get people up to speed on following the Trinity Collaborative white paper and and the prescription, then those people transfer out and they're gone. And so then we need to bring it to another group of new people and they've just usually come from school where they've learned all about basal area. And I don't know what the solution is other than I think Tara is probably a solution because she's planning on sticking around for a while, at least last time I talked to her, she was. And so if we have that kind of consistency of leadership, then I don't think that problem with the basal area or canopy cover, you know, it it becomes an issue. I think Tara, last time I talked to her, seemed to understand the collaborative prescription pretty well. So I don't know, I guess that would be my response to that. I'm sorry, I I wasn't on that field trip. Sounds like I should have been there.
Thank you, Larry. Anybody else?
Hi, this is Christine from the Fish and Wildlife Service and I just want to apologize because I unfortunately was not able to attend the trip on December fifteenth, but Jenny Erickson, who is our field office supervisor and one of our newer biologists, Devin DeJocapo, did attend the field trip and were able to interact with folks from the collaborative and Tara and the Watershed Research and Training Center. So I do have notes from the field trip and I expect that we will be doing some more work. I think that you focused on the North Trinity project with the collaborative and then a subgroup went off to look at Bowerman. But I did just want to say we are engaging more now with Tara and the other units on the forest, the NRA, the east side in early development and meeting our streamlining consultation guidance and participating in the High and Palm, you know, ID team meetings and have done some field trip, did a field trip out there in November and that was really beneficial for me to see that landscape and what is proposed and the sample mark. And I look forward to working with them on Bowerman and additional projects. And then also participating more regularly at the collaborative meetings and field trips. But I have to say that I wasn't there in the field to see the conditions. I am familiar, you know, with the stretch from Scott Mountain into Weaverville and would agree with Arnold that there are areas where there are just too many small, you know, smaller sized class trees. So there is a concern and a need there. But that's it.
All right, thank you, Christine.
I apologize, Christine. We had Christine over to High and Palm into Big Ranch and and then, yeah, it was Jenny Erickson and Devon that that came out to Bowerman and North Trinity County. Just just to, you know, I really am committed to to making sure that we are you know, using the the white paper and the intent behind what what this group came up with. And I had you know, Cody had my forester reach out to Tom Walls to to just chat forestry. Tom kind of turned him back to the white paper. And so, you know, those those efforts are being made if if you want to have additional, you know, participation or or talk about what what those prescriptions are going to to look like. We'll tell you, you know, I I sort of sit in in between a rock and a hard spot in that we know what the prescription looks like, what what you want it to look like. And there is, there is some measurements that have to be attainable through that because that's what I get held to, right? Somebody, we can say we're going to do all of these things and try to describe it. But if somebody can't come up behind me and then say that I did the things that we said we were going to do, then I then that just won't stand up on my end. So Larry really hit the nail on the head. I'm really trying to make sure we understand what what it is that the collaborative is looking for. And then work that, you know, continue to read through, to verify, to bounce it off of, to do sample marks. And as we work through it, so there, we have touch points during the planning, you know, we have the the way left side trip we did to Big Ranch, for example. Then we have, you know, we're getting ready to do the NEPA field trips. And then there will certainly be field trips to go look at the a sample mark both in for sure in the North Trinity County project. And you should expect that on High and Palm as well. So I'm I, it's not a one and done time to, you know, interact with us. It's these are our projects that we're working on together, looking to get get something that we can live with, but that also meets what I have to do under NEPA and that I'm held accountable for, if that makes some sense to all of you. And I thank you for the gentle pilot teaser. I I do, I am working on that agreement to get that. I have the the master will be going to to Monique to go into our grants and agreements people. And then I have some very strict deadlines I have to meet to get the SPA submitted to get that project under a contract. And we'll be pursuing a master also with the RCD to do some work in the Weaverville Community Forest as well, followed up with a SPA. So, but thank you for the reminder. We will be doing a post, an actual harvest field trip to Pilot this year. I'm confident.
Right.
And there'll be barbecue.
We're guarding the gentle tweak.
Yes.
It's early in the meeting.
You'll get me some more later. Sledgehammer's coming out later.
But the the dilemma has always been, we can take a field trip and everybody's standing there and looking around and we all discuss what would make a better forest, a more healthy forest, and everybody agrees and nods their head. That's the easy part. Then it's the translation onto paper, which has always been ever since we started, the difficult.
I will tell you, I had a a meeting recently about the 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 High and Palm scoping document, an internal meeting. And I want to thank you guys because I know, you know, Larry and I have talked about it. It's not as clear as as what we're hoping to get to, but it certainly is is written much more reader friendly than what we've done in the past. And that that comment was made to me that, you know, hey, this scoping document, it's it's much easier to see what you're trying to do. It's not as technical. It's got that, you know, general wording in it. I know, you know, Larry and I, like I said, have chatted and and we still have some work to do in that arena, but that's that's my goal is in all of our documents to have, we'll have those technical specifications because I have to have those.
Right.
But then also to have that big picture that talks about it, what are we trying to do as an end result? So you can read the document and understand where we're going and and just keep building on our relationship and and that end result.
Yeah, so that that's the blend, the future desired results and data that that you're held to.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Tara. Any other comments, questions on fuel tour?
Not seeing any, so we'll move on. Next up, we've got our wildfire camera. Update. And so I will kick that one off here. We do have Kevin Anderson on with us, by the way. So he is a partner with Alert California slash Digital Path, so.
Thank you for that clarification, because.
Yes, maybe we'll have Kevin give us all kind of a better understanding of that relationship here. So I'll I'll prompt you for that, Kevin, but let me just. Open things up here and just kind of give everybody an update on where things stand with our efforts to get more cameras here in Trinity County. So. I think you're all aware that there is a subcommittee of the collaborative. That has been meeting with Alert California staff to partner and and explore ways in which we can. Accelerate getting more cameras here in Trinity County. So with that, we did have another call on December eleventh. And really, probably from my perspective, the most significant news, I guess, to report. Coming out of that call was the addition of two sites that are on our spreadsheet here. Bald Hill and Horse Mountain, so number two and four in priority. And and the significance of those two are the partnership with Velocity and Travis Finch. So Travis was able to hook up with Alert California, Kevin and and Mike and others and discuss. Sites that Travis has some keen interest in and some ability to accelerate. Getting cameras on those sites. They're not, you know, public land. They're they've already got existing infrastructure and capacity and capability. So. Based on that discussion that Travis had with Alert California staff, the agreement was reached. And and those two sites were identified and funding was was then applied to pursue those two sites. And spoke with Travis here recently, as well as Kevin, and things are moving forward, I think. Travis has responded and provided cost estimates in terms of what it's going to take. Velocity to get those two sites installed and implemented, get those cameras on site. So those are moving ahead.
Good question.
Correct.
When that happens, Travis's participation is simply the like placing of the cameras. But he won't, will he be providing um internet facilitation there as well? Will he also be providing um the eyes to watch this, or is that having to come from Alert California?
That comes from Alert California. They'll just be kind of added to the overall system that Alert California manages.
Okay.
In Trinity as well as, you know, throughout the state of California.
Okay.
Yeah.
I guess the only thing that was in the back of my mind about all of that was, it just kind of concerned me that Alert California seemed that this was a 12 month thing. And it just is a little bit in my mind that paying for those services when there's three feet of snow on the ground doesn't make a lot of sense. But that still has to be a year round agreement. There's no wiggle there.
Kevin, that's a that's a good lead in there. So that's that issue or question has come up. I've heard it from others. Relative to kind of those annual O N M costs, when clearly, you know, the fire season is what? Six, nine months? I don't know.
Fourteen months.
Maybe fourteen, but sometimes we do get snow on the ground around here.
Right.
And maybe, you know, the alert system is not really a priority at those times of year. So would you explain maybe kind of how those costs are are developed and why it 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 at least it's represented as a 12 month kind of cost?
Yeah, it's just that we we maintain the cameras year round. You know, and and Travis will be maintaining the cameras year round in order to to keep them online and and ready for for any type of incident that that could occur. You know, and what they they can they can monitor, you know, and there's, you know, there's been, there's been other case uses where where it's been used for, you know, mudslides. Or, you know, just weather events, you know, extreme weather in general. But it's just our our policy is to 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 maintain them year round. And that's how the the system was built and how how we do it in the rest of California.
All right, thank you. The good.
It is what it is.
Maybe you can see a signal fire or somebody gets lost in the wilderness, I guess.
Hey, that's a question.
Yeah.
Is it be used if search and rescue needed your help?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I think there is, there have been cases where where we have helped find lost hikers. Yeah, I think that there was a case up in Tahoe, maybe last year. Yeah, and that is, the cameras can be used for whatever the sponsors want, want to, you know, they, when you, when you guys, like PG&E and as partnership, the US Forest Service is going to, you know. You know, allowing these cameras to go on, so that you guys at the forest will have logins to the system and be able to, you know, and and. We can talk about the the Resource Conservation District being able to have that logins as well. And get notifications for for any fires in the area. But basically, that anyone who has that, you guys can go in and control the cameras. And and there's just a, there'll be a training that that will give everyone, once the cameras come online and there's, you know, basically, obviously, if there's an active incident in the area. You know, they're, they take priority for controlling the cameras. And and, yeah, you can use it for whatever means, you know, you guys need to for, you know, if there's a benefit, so.
Nice. Thank you for that.
All right, yeah, thank you, Kevin, very much. So in in addition to those two that we have going forward in partnership with Velocity, there is six sites on the US Forest Service lands. Where applications are in currently and have been in for some time to get NEPA clearance and get the special use permit application approved. So let me just go through those again. Those are Picket Peak, Nob Peak, Hay Fork Bali, Lime Dyke, Tom Head and Bear Mountain, McCloud. So all those, those six sites have funding commitments from PG&E. You know, I I think from what Kevin and I have discussed and what he shared with me, I think, assuming we get those approved and get NEPA. Special use permits in place, maybe three of those would be online for construction this year, implementation. Maybe the other three would come online in two thousand five.
Two thousand five?
Twenty five, yeah.
I was like, you know, I was like.
Yeah, I had a five in my head.
That's all right.
It wasn't ninety five, so we're doing something right.
Yeah, two thousand twenty five, so.
Gotcha.
So with that, Tara, maybe this is a good.
Yeah.
Opportunity for you to kind of update us on where those applications are on those six sites and what what else. Might be needed to get those across the finish line, so, you know, we can begin to talk implementation and getting those cameras in place, so.
Yep, so I I did find out what kind of stalled out the process, and you find this hard to believe, but it kind of came down to money. Um, we had the, as you can imagine, if you were to go put a. A pole and a camera on a historic building here in town, there are some things that you need to go through to do that. You need to have a historic architect, you know, somebody that makes sure it it meets whatever criteria is required. So so that was where we started to run into some problems, was many of our lookouts are historic. And so they would have to be looked at by a historic architect. So and the information we needed, we needed more in-depth information on what exactly Stan Tech was planning to put on the the towers. So Stan Tech said, you know, we've already spent, and Digital Path said, we've already spent the money that you gave us for ARC information. We got, you're going to get no more information from us. So they tried to go to PG&E, hey, can you fund so we can get this, some more of this information to get to the Forest Service? PG&E said no. Digital Path said, no, they weren't going to fund any more of that either. So that kind of was, that's where the process started to slow down. So where we're at now is we have a, I can tell you, I've got a team assigned to it. We've got an archaeologist, we've, it's a priority, so much so that our our forest archaeologist, Matt Padilla. Is going to to pick it up and and get it moving again. But we, when we have to work through kind of that information gap, what is it that archaeology needs that we didn't have exactly? And find a way to to get what we need so that we can finish that part of the process. I have a meeting coming up on the twenty fourth, should be on, if if that works for for everybody with with Digital Path. But myself and Brenda, the archaeologist, and my planner will all be on that call. To see what exactly, you know, we need to move that forward. So the the problem, because I will tell you, when I saw the little standalone units, I'm like, I do not understand what the problem is there. Those those would be no impact, but I felt at least somewhat better that it wasn't the standalone unit so as much a problem. Other than we have to know where those are going to go. See, we can't, you can't do tribal consultation, for instance, if you don't know where you're actually going to put something. Right? You have to kind of know where that's going to be. So we have just some gaps in information that we're going to try to work through with them. And I've got Stephanie Reese is my planner assigned to this. Matt Padilla is the. Is the archaeologist and Lisa Ren Duncan is, we have her working through ACES, is the special use administrator.
The standalone, if you're right, do seem totally simple. They're just totally expensive.
Yes.
I mean, you want to buy more, Bonanza is like fifty six thousand dollars.
Yeah. Yep. So we have the list here. I have some good communications. It looks like. Hay Fork Bali was going to go on the lookout tower. Picket Peak was going to go on the lookout tower. Tom Head was going to go on the lookout tower. And.
Not Lime Dyke.
No, Lime Dyke is standalone, yeah. Bear Mountain. So there's there's some others that are that are standalone, so.
Is it just the CR though, not the biology? Is the biology okay, or everything?
I don't expect to have any, I don't, there's a, there's a podcast I listened to that was like, I don't know, the fish guy didn't sign up on the lookout. You know, I I work, we shouldn't have that problem. I'm, I will make sure we don't have those kinds of problems. But I do have, I wanted you all to know, it is a priority with myself and Rachel. It is moving in the right direction. I am confident we'll have everything signed off to do in to get those installed this summer. So by the field season, but I see everyone is lined up.
Hold on, hang on then.
Oh, I didn't see.
All right, Larry, we'll get you next. We got Diana here.
I was wondering about our Ironside and Bali included in that, anywhere?
Ironside is on a standalone. It was a part of the original submission, but because of the hazmat cleanup that we needed to do there after the fire. And finding a solution for the lookout or what we're going to do, the cleanup has been done, thank goodness. The, we did a survey, we're doing a hurried survey of the whole top of the mountain. That's been completed. We're waiting for the report, so that will move forward on its own. It is still very important. It's still part of the process. It's kind of on its own because of the lookout is kind of. How are we going to, what is the Forest Service going to do at the top of that mountain with our tribal partners? Still has to be negotiated with our tribal partners. That mountain's just a little different.
Obviously.
Yeah, so.
Down that area.
Yeah, I'm working on the Ironside one with with our tribal partners specifically.
Thank you.
Good question.
And then you asked about Weaver. Did you answer that? Weaver Bali, did you answer that as well?
I have Hay Fork Bali on my list. I don't have Weaver Bali on the list.
Yeah, there is one in Oregon Mountain currently.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
There is one.
Yeah. Have you ever checked out the camera website? I go look at them sometimes.
Not very often, sometimes.
Okay, Larry?
Yeah, I want to bring it to Tara's attention. I went out to Picket Peak a couple of weeks ago. And I noticed that the trees all around the lookout now are starting to get. To the point where they're going to start obstructing the view from the lookout. So I wondered if there was going to be any attempt to to deal with that.
Yeah, we'll have to include any veg management we need to do. We'll go in RCE. And so at that point, you know, we have the specialists, we have a little checklist we can work through with all the specialists to. But you're right, Larry, there's some of these will require some some veg management to make sure that there's on, that there is an unobstructed view. And we'll we'll include that in.
Okay, Kevin?
Yeah, I was just gonna mention that, you know, looking forward to that meeting next week to Tara. Thank you for, you know, taking this on and and, you know, getting everyone organized and pushing these camera applications forward. I appreciate that. But if there's any issue with historical towers or, you know, landmarks or anything, you know, we can always. Change it to a standalone at any location. That's, I think there was some confusion that I I mentioned that back in in December, it'd be earlier in this month. And that was my intent is just, you know, whatever, you know, makes the most sense to get these installed this summer, I want to, you know, we want to proceed that way, so.
Right, we're on the same page. I want the the path of least resistance that gets these things implemented and and put on the mountains as quickly as possible. So I think we're all on the same page there.
So you had said the cost was an issue. The standalone's for fifty six thousand dollars. And yet, any of these can be switched to a standalone if needed because of positioning, but is there funding if that's needed?
I'm not the funding person.
Kevin, yeah.
So just to, yeah, to clarify that the standalone that we showed you, we are going to install that at all of the lookouts. It's just depending on, we wanted to go on the lookout with the cameras only, running our CAT six communication cables up to the, like the handrail, the guardrail on the lookouts. Because that gives us a better view of the surroundings. But we're still going to use that same solar structure for our power at any of the given sites.
And so funding isn't a problem, correct?
Right, yes, it's the same, it's the same cost for for all all six of the sites.
Well, I thought the. The Bonanza King was fifty, over fifty thousand, and the Freddy Ridge was down to twenty six.
Right.
So.
Correct, yeah, well, no, no, so that the six, four applications that we have in process with the forest are all the same. So so that, yeah, Bonanza King would be just like the ones that we are already proposing to put on on lookouts in the in just Trinity National Forest. And then Freddy Ridge is, there's an existing tower, there's a shelter. Travis has the internet connection. That's a very simple install. We're just putting the cameras up on the, on his pole that he has there, running the cables down and then into the shelter. And then that's, you know, takes a couple of days worth of work, very, you know, maybe, the cameras themselves are fairly expensive, they're about forty five hundred dollars a piece. So some materials, you know, are are less there and labor's less there, because there's, there's no need to establish a power source at Freddy Ridge.
So so Kevin, the cameras that are expected to be installed, they're all about fifty thousand dollars each one?
Yeah, yeah, PG&E and PG&E has been funding, you know, a lot of the studies with Stan Tech. Those have cost several thousands of dollars for us to 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 get Stan Tech to to put those together and to do all the research for each of the sites. Yeah, each one is going to cost PG&E about fifty thousand dollars.
And is there any money there for the ongoing monthly fees?
Yeah, PG&E is going to, on those six sites, will fund the ongoing monthly fees, you know, and. Forever, essentially.
Right, and and so the the two with Velocity with Travis too, Kevin, again, he's he's pitched it in, right? So we're reducing some of those costs for you guys.
Yeah, yeah, so Travis, yeah, we're we're just, we want to make sure that Travis, we, you know, in in the the cost estimate that I provide over to PG&E. That I incorporate any cost that Travis is going to encounter, because we're going to pass that directly with PG&E. They're going to find the cameras there. They've already said that they want them. So we just want to make sure that Travis isn't taking on any, any, you know, any costs that he, you know, isn't going to include, because then he'll be on the hook for them, right? And, yeah, and and those will be, you know, fairly cheap in in comparison to those those lookout sites. Because like, once again, they're on the, they're on existing towers, there's existing shelters, the internet connection's already there. It's all all established at those locations. And and also the good thing about those is they're a little bit quicker and easier to get installed, so.
Thank you very much. So again, in summary, we do have eight sites, in addition to the two that are already in place, which would put us at ten. And yet, we've got twenty one on the list, and and two of those eight aren't even on our list, so we're actually up to twenty three now.
I I appreciate that you had some confusion. I just, even the names, I mean, you have Stan Tech, Digital Path, Alert California.
Sure.
I I was having a heck of a time, you know, picking this up and figuring out who's who in the zoo.
So Kevin, there's your prompt. Could you just highlight this all in terms of the figures here? And maybe even throw UC San Diego in there too, in terms of where UC San Diego fits.
So UC San Diego developed in Alert California and and runs Alert California. We are contracted, Digital Path is contracted by UC San Diego to manage the operations center and and the notification, AI notifications. Digital Path actually developed the artificial intelligence that's ran on the website and developed the website itself for the University of San Diego. And that's, you know, why we we always mention us as as in such a, in partnership, you know, that Digital Path and Alert California work together. And and, you know, to some extent, a lot of our employees at Digital Path are, you know, we talk about them ourselves as being Alert California. You know, employees, because we are, you know, through that, through that contract with the University of San Diego. But what what we've ran into in the past and one reason. But what, what we've ran into in the past, and one reason we always throw Digital Path on, on the applications. For, with, you know, USFS two ninety-nine is that. Previously, when we applied on lookouts, it, it became an issue when, when UNR, we used to be at Alert Wildfire. We would say, we were putting their names on it, but then Digital Path actually owns the equipment. And that caused an issue with another forest, so now we always just put Digital Path on the USFS two ninety-nine applications, because we're actually the owners of the equipment.
Very good. Any questions about? The partnership there?
No, but I, I'm sorry, I shouldn't jump in, maybe someone has a question about the partnership.
I, I don't see any other, so go ahead, yeah.
Okay, my question was just, and maybe I maybe misheard, but I'm hearing in the fifty thousand dollar range for the cameras, one said fifty-six thousand. But at some point, with regard to Freddy Ridge, something was said about forty-five hundred dollars for each camera. Is that like the ongoing cost, or did I write something down wrong?
No, yeah, so that's the, the actual cost just for the camera itself, that doesn't have any of the, the equipment that goes along with it. Or is required to, to maintain the site, you know, for power or, and it doesn't include, it doesn't include anything, that's just the camera itself. You know, that, that's the cost for it that I was, so I was just mentioning that. Two camera site, you're spending almost ten thousand dollars just for the cameras alone, you know what I mean? So that's, that was my, my explanation for why the material costs are so high. On the, on these app, on the sites is that, you know, the cameras are very, you know, high tech, and, and they cost a considerable amount of money.
And how long do they usually last? What's the lifespan of the camera?
You know, to be fair, I, I, I think I would have to do a little research on that with, with Access Communications as the manufacturer. But, you know, I think we, we've done tests and spent, we spend them every two minutes in the, in the, in the background, you don't see that on the website. We have cameras that have been online for, you know, upwards of five years and no issues, so they, they last. I, 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 they're pretty, pretty resilient, you know, they, we don't really have to replace cameras. That, once, once they're online, they're online, and then, you know, if, if a camera is replaced, it's typically warranted, I think the warranty is good for five years, so.
All right, so Kevin, another, you know, kind of going forward, I, I guess. Many have indicated that they're, they're. Concerned about the lack of coverage, e- even with these additional cameras going in. Principally, you know, North County, South County, right? And so a question has arisen, is there a map that shows? The existing locations of the two, and then the proposed locations for the additional eight sites? So that everyone just kind of has a visual as to where these, where we know, we, we may end up with the ten cameras. And where kind of those holes are in, in, in coverage throughout the county. Is, is there a, a map that exists, or if there isn't, could one be put together?
Yeah, there, there is, and if I could get my Google Earth to open up right now, I would, I'd show it to you guys, but I have so many different. So many different maps in my Google Earth, it takes a minute for it to, to start up, and I've actually been trying to get it to open pretty much this.
Well, i- if you could just, you know, I don't put, put it on a PDF or whatever, but if you could. Be with something, then we can get that out to everyone, just so they have a visual, that question, I get that question all the time, and I don't even know where they are.
Yeah, so what I'll do is I'll do a screenshot of it, because it is, it's a large file, and I, you know, like it, it, it crashes my computer sometimes. Because there's, there's a thousand and seventy PTZ cameras in California already, right? So it's when you do the, the existing coverage and then, and then, you know, maybe the day cameras aren't, aren't too big of a deal to send that over. You know, and show the Viewshed coverage of just those, but, you know, to layer it with the existing and then what's, what's coming online. I'll just do a screenshot of that and shoot it over to you.
Great, that would be awesome. So, you know, in conclusion here, that is, that is the challenge going forward. What, what, we've got funding commitment for, again, these additional eight sites. We still have quite a few more sites on our spreadsheet that don't have a funding commitment. So Jerry, you know, has been leading that effort, we had some funding entities on the last call on twelve-eleven. We do, by the way, have another call scheduled for next Wednesday on the twenty-fourth from two to three. I have sent that invite out, you're looking at me?
No, it's just a busy day.
I've not sent the agenda out, but I will get that. I wanted to wait till after this meeting in case something surfaced, but. I will be sending an agenda out, if you haven't seen that invite and you'd like to get that, let me know, and we'll make sure you get that. Invite next Wednesday, the twenty-fourth, but. So Jerry has been kind of leading the effort to enlist funding partners to the table. And, and explore i- if their particular, you know, funding is in, in the realm of possibilities. With regard to funding this additional sites. But I think that is going to be the challenge for us all, you know, and it is going to take some creativity. Particularly on kind of those annual, and O and M kind of maintenance costs, right? Most funders like to buy stuff, right? They like, you know, they, they like something you can touch and feel. And kind of take a picture of, the O and M stuff tends to be more challenging, I think, for, for funding entities. So Jerry, do you want to, you know, weigh in here relative to your thoughts?
Well, I'd just give an update on Carol Paul, who's out of the country, it's like, they're not here. She was told that CAL FIRE, the wildfire prevention program, could fund cameras. So she started work on that, the first person told her yes, and then she talked to the next person and they said, no, cameras don't qualify. Then she talked to three more people in CAL FIRE, and they said, nope, they don't qualify. I mean, how do you imagine that wildfire prevention program does not include wildfire alert cameras? So she's pretty stymied about that, she's pretty upset, because she put a lot of time in it, because it was a short deadline. I can't imagine that there's not some other pot of money in CAL FIRE? Or maybe in OES somewhere, local, state, are people to tap? As Jim said, I think actually the purchase of the cameras are, is the easy part, the hard part's going to be the ongoing. Twelve, fifteen hundred dollar maintenance. There's, I just learned this great acronym, it's SAAAS, which I thought was going to be really kind of a high-tech kind of thing. And it stands for Software as a Service. Yeah, so. So I think that's the challenge, it's going to be for the next, beyond PG&E cameras, the monthly fees.
So I just wanted to say. You know, as the, one of the benefits of having these really large landscape level planning efforts is. And, and I, I would like to tell you, nothing gets by me, I don't miss anything, but I'd be lying to you. So as we do these field trips and as we do scoping and as we do those things. If, like, when we scope North Trinity County, I expect somebody to comment, hey, and, and if, I don't know if, well, we should pay attention. But somebody should say, hey, what, what about a camera on Bonanza King? Because the wheels would be, it'd be so much easier for you to get funding if the NEPA is already complete. So for you, Larry, if there's a place, you know, there's a South Fork Mountain project that's going to be put together. If there's a place out there that could benefit from a camera, if there's a place in Big Ranch, if there's a place, you know, around Junction City, North Trinity County. You know, those are all comments that are really helpful to make sure that those don't get missed in the NEPA. And they're just such a small part of a large NEPA, and they fit, they are certainly community risk reduction to add those cameras.
So Tara, is, is that a conversation that has to happen between a person who wants a camera up and say, with Kevin's organization? So in your NEPA, you can be specific to that site, or can it just be a generic statement, hey, we want a camera?
If you tell me, it would be helpful for me, because I have, most of my folks, we measure fuels, we do, I mean, I could, I could probably get. Fire suppression, help me figure it out as well, but if you guys. Yeah, and I'd like to know how much shade it creates. That's the most important part. Know if you could, you know, if you get this list that you have, plus what, what you're going to get from Kevin. Then I think if you're like, oh, hey, they're going to be, we know we want one on Bonanza King. We think you should put a, think about putting a lookout on Bonanza King, because I do need to know which peak, because they're, they're all authorized a little bit differently. Just give me at least that, and then I can get the analysis done, and then, you know, it's like preparing for rain, and then once you get the, the NEPA in place. And you can go out and compete for funding, and I assume that would make you much more competitive to have it already authorized.
Yeah, totally.
And it would be much more efficient for us as well, and, and it meets the purpose and need of our, of what we're doing, everything we're doing over here is about. Reducing the risk to our communities.
You would think.
Very good, it's two, two of four.
Yeah, thanks, sometimes, but, you know, we might, we can make it harder.
Let's not get carried away.
All right, any other comments, questions about cameras and where we're going and where we've been? Larry?
Yeah, so Tara, did you mean by South Fork Mountain, you mean Picket Peak, right?
No, if there's something, you know that next, we took you on that field trip out there for the fuel break along South Fork Mountain, yeah, Picket Peak is the one good place. You guys know this county better than I do, but if they're somewhere along that stretch, that you, you know, as we scope South Fork Mountain. You should be thinking, you know, that area better than anyone, like, hey, a camera might be beneficial here, or a camera might be beneficial there, then we can include it. I just, I mentioned South Fork Mountain because it's the next, you know, project that's, that's going to come up out there.
Right, well, there, there is a spot, because they already had identified Lime Dyke across the river. I didn't bring it up, but there is an old lookout there called the Cold Springs Lookout, that was exactly where we were on that field trip with Kristen Lark. And I, I, I believe there's a little tiny inholding there, I'm not sure if the lookout's on the inholding or whether that's on public land. But that would be a spot that would, that would overlook High and Palm, also looks, looks at the Mad River drainage as well, so.
Yeah, that, that sounds reasonable to me, and, and you guys, as you're working through this process, are finding out what, what, what does it take to have an effective place to put a camera? You know, you're, we're working through this and all these other ones, so at some point, you guys are going to know more about this than, than I am, and I think that was a month ago.
Well, that might, again, Kevin, back to the map question, you know, in addition to the, you know, ten sites that we're looking at. We do have a spreadsheet, right, that has an additional probably thirteen sites on here, if we could get those on a map, that helps everyone kind of visualize. Then maybe, you know, what are the priorities from a geographic standpoint in terms of getting coverage?
We actually.
Yeah.
A map that has all of this stuff on it, it's part of the package that we originally put together.
All right, well, maybe you can, you know.
But, I mean, it's, it is this list, but it doesn't have, what it doesn't have is like the Viewshed.
The Viewshed, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think I ran Viewshed on that whole list already, so we could, we could get that.
Yeah, if you can get that out to us, that'd be helpful.
One other thing that, so Trent Tuthill, the county administrative officer, had reached out to me to talk a little bit about. Picket Peak in, in particular, and my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that Picket Peak that is leased by the county? The, the, the actual hole or the tower or something, is that accurate?
Kevin had a meeting with him yesterday.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, so that, that, that's actually, the county has a tower up there, but we, I reached out to Trent Tuthill.
Oh, lost him.
Dropped right on now.
It's not must opened.
So waiting for him to get back online, there's two, there's actually, the, the lookout is there, and then there's the whole. Cell phone tower and county tower array that's sort of within three hundred yards of the lookout. And so there's two different sites there.
Okay. Yeah, so Kevin was going to meet with the CEO and discuss the county tower and what, what the possibilities would be. To pursue that, you know.
Right, because there's already power there that powers up the cell tower and, and the rest of that, so.
So they probably have a permit with, with us for that, so we'd have to amend their permit.
Yep.
To.
Sounds easier than. So that'll probably come up in your call, you know, next week with them, because he didn't meet.
Okay.
Okay, it looks like we lost Kevin, I don't see. Coming back here, so. All right, well, we're going to wrap up the wildfire camera. That you, Kevin?
Yeah, sorry about that, my computer died. So basically, what, and I'll probably jump off after this, but the. The, the thing with Picket Peak, there is, there's a county tower there, and I was not, you know, I. I'm just trying to cover my bases on reaching out to Trent Tuthill, because I wasn't sure what was going to, where we were going to go with, with the Forest Service. But now after hearing Tara, you know, I think I, I will not proceed with trying to. Put in an application for the, the county tower at Picket Peak, because we've had that pro, application with the Forest Service in process for quite some time, and we want to put it up there. So that's, that was why Trent Tuthill reached out, because I, I talked to him, and I, I mentioned this to Trent as well, that I was going to. You know, let him know, basically after talking with, with Tara and others at the forest, what the plan was going to be there. And, and that if, you know, everything went well with, with the conversations with, with Tara and others, that, that we would continue with our US Forest Service application. And I would not be putting an application to go on the county tower there. But I did mention to, to Trent that, you know, if, if they have, if he has other county towers. You know, that are in Trinity, Trinity County, that, you know, he should, if he could send those locations over to me, that I could then take those. With, those tower sites, run Viewshed on them, and then see if there's anyone who's interested in, in, you know, putting a camera up on any other county towers that are within Trinity County.
All right, thank you, Kevin, for that update. Okay, any comments there? Cameras? I'm saying is, we're going to wrap that one up and move on, so thank you again, Kevin, for joining us today, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you guys, have a good day.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, Tara, I think you're up. Forest Service updates.
So I was going to talk less, that's not going well. Already failing. Okay, um, so I'll give you a, a hiring update first. We are really happy to say that we successfully filled our, one of our archaeologist positions, so that's an addition. So we added an archaeologist, which is really important. We also just today, and I'm really excited about it, landed our GIS person. For the, for the west side of the forest, and we got Brandon Mack, who did the map for the, for the governor's task force meeting. So he's, he's really, really good, super excited about that. We've, the hiring of foresters has been a challenge, we have been very successful in rec hiring. So that, that's been a plus, we'll have two more rec folks starting, like, two more, starting very soon. So we're excited about being up, really, really increasing our capacity in recreation, and that's starting to show up.
So Tara, sorry.
Yeah.
Are the new hires from out of the area coming in, or have you kind of pulled from other local agencies?
Those are great questions, so I'm happy to say I totally stole the GIS person from the Klamath National Forest, he'll be, he's going to be remote. So he didn't move here, but the archaeologist is a long-term temporary that's worked for us, that lives in the community and will be, will be working for us permanently now, so.
Looking if you, by doing that, created holes in other agencies.
On the Klamath.
I know it's supervisor's to avoid for a while.
Yeah, so.
The archaeologist, that's Mapadia?
No, Mapadia is the forest archaeologist, it's Jessica Coyle, she's our, she's worked here on the district as a temporary for a long time. And we're excited to pick her up permanently, and, and she does live in the community, so yeah, that's, that's been really good. Morning, there's so many people. I'm just permanent, I think that's the most recent permit hiring, there's some, I said some other rec staff showing up.
I don't know who the, well, I don't know officially who the rec staffs.
Yes, that's okay.
Yeah.
Along the, representing the Chassat Trinity National Forest. This is a proud, proud moment, if you got to see the Rose Bowl parade, you got to see our Packers down there. Super, super proud of them, we had them come down to our forest leadership team meeting and honored them, and especially just. I can't imagine having to have your mule team trained to deal with, you know, Pasadena. I can't drive through Pasadena, I've got a better chance getting the mule to do what it's supposed to do than me, I'll tell you that much. So, but that was super exciting, I thought, and, and really brings some good, some good national attention to the agency and to our pack stock program. Grant season, we're just coming out of grant season, which I have no idea why so many of these grants come due during the holidays. I, but I really appreciate all of our partners who really rolled up their sleeves, and there are many of them. To, to go out and compete for money that would then come into Trinity County and. You know, there are, it is not just one grant, there are a lot of people really trying to, to work to bring money into the county. And I was working with Carol, and I, you know, I was really bummed that she put all that work in, and so that's, I really. Um, and so that's, I really wanna make sure we include that in the, that Bonanza King in that North Trinity County so that we can at least get the NEPA done. Um, so that, there's a lot of, of grant, uh, requests that come in. We're, we're working on having, and typically with a, with a grant request, there's a letter of, um, support that comes from the Forest Service. Um, sometimes they're from me and sometimes they're from the forest soup and we, we kind of work on refining those to, to make sure that, um, we're doing it the right way, but really appreciate how hard all the partners are working on that. Um, planning, High and Palm is continuing to, to move forward. Um, I'm really happy with, uh, the engagement, uh, thrilled. Uh, Christine Jordan is part of our ID team at this point. She come, is on our meetings, um, weekly or every other week, can't remember. Um, and, and that, that project is really, you know, getting some traction and moving forward, so I'm thrilled with that. Uh, Bowerman, we're starting meetings with, um, that's a partner led NEPA by the Watershed Center. And we will, um, be having regular meetings with them as, and Randy and her team as we move that, uh, towards the finish line and make sure, uh, Fish and Wildlife Services that we're all on the same page, uh, so I'm happy with that. Um, as I mentioned, Pilot, I'm working on the, the spa package. Um, I've got the master pretty much done. Um, we'll be getting, so to put, just to make sure everyone knows, to put Pilot into the, um, into a spa, we already have the, the saw timber volume that's been done since you guys were out there. We did that last summer. But we have to, um, estimate the biomass, uh, volume because we're gonna, if we have money, we're gonna want that removed, not just piled and left. So, um, I have to come up with some volumes, uh, for that, so that we can put that into that spa. Um, just so you know, in case you're wondering what we're working on. Um, what other planning things are working? There's some, there's a lot of small NEPA, um, that, that's going on. We're doing some stuff with Trinity Knowles, especially use permit up there, um, and working on, uh, quite a few other special use permits. Um, the fire cameras is, uh, falls under special uses, so. Um, we expect, we do have a couple that were, that are, um, right at the finish line and I've told, talked about these a number of times, um, but they're, about the time you have it ready to go, there's a new wrinkle. Um, many of you are probably aware of, uh, the, um, executive order about old growth that came out right at the holidays. Um, so we have to just make sure it's just another filter to put our projects through to make sure we're, we're meeting that intent. Um, and as well as making sure we, we've got a good path forward, um, depending on what happens with the pond turtles, so.
Could you speak to that, just for the folks that aren't familiar with what you're referring to?
Uh, so, not, not well. So it is available, uh, 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 online, but, uh, President Biden signed, um, an executive order um, about, uh, limiting of things that we do in old growth. Um, and I, it's not, it's not cutting of old growth, it's, it's operations in old growth stands. And so even putting prescribed fire, um, in there, I have to, there's just another gauntlet I have to run, uh, to make sure that we've, we've dotted all of our i's and crossed all of our t's and we're still working out what that is because, again, that dropped right at Christmas. Um, so we're, we're working through that, but that, so that, that is, WCF Phase Two shouldn't be, won't be impacted by that. Um, I don't think there's any old growth that we're dealing with out there, but, uh, uh, August, I just have to make sure August Phase Two is that we've crossed all those i's and crossed all those t's and not the i's. Um, anyway, so that, that's what's going on. Um, we, uh, we've got to put together a pretty good team to, to look at our roads. We'll be doing some legacy site, um, restoration, fixing some legacy sites up this summer as part of our field work. Um, and I can be happy to report, we've already accomplished over twelve hundred acres of burning this fiscal year, so that's since September. Um, and it, I, we have targets to get a lot more than that, but, but we're still in the, because we haven't done much veg management, all the burn, burning that we're doing is pile burning. And pile burning is, is difficult to accomplish a lot of acres without, you know, there's people out there soaking wet every day, burning piles. Um, and it is not, uh, doesn't get you, doesn't, it takes a long time, let's put it that way, and a lot of people. But I'm very happy with our twelve hundred acres so far. We're, we're looking to get, uh, twenty-five hundred acres, uh, completed, uh, before we hit fire season, so. Um, on the good news, I'm happy to report out the, uh, disaster supplemental. No, that's wrong. The landscape funding has finally landed. Um, so we, you know, with all the budget uncertainties, um, we, we just got our, uh, our allocation for our, um, landscape and for the landscape for, for implementation, um, money, uh, well, for the landscape, uh, we're gonna have just, just under thirty-five million dollars, which is a, a very, very, very substantial number. Some of that will cover, as, as was referenced earlier, we do have a landscape organization that's helping keep some things moving from implementation, but for implementation money, we're, uh, we're about thirty-one, a little over thirty-one million dollars, thirty-two million dollars, so, um.
It's kind of unexpected, right? Did you expect that?
We actually asked for more, so. Yes, but it, uh, uh, but I do wanna, this is a good time to stop, so the, this collaborative group, the RCD, the, the Watershed Center, um, the Fish and Wildlife, there's all of the partnerships that we have and I, and I'm, there's a lot more. Our tribal partners, um, all of the strong partnerships that we've built over the years, um, has created, uh, of, uh, this network of people and when, when you guys go to your, um, they go to things that RCD do and they talk about the landscape and our level of partnering and, um, all of those things have created, this landscape has a reputation and it, it was funded in the top tier of landscapes because of, um, because of all the reasons that it's important to do here, because of our fire risk, because Trinity County is the poorest county in the state, because of the strength of our partnerships, because of the work that we've already been doing, because of this collaborative group, because of all of those things. And so when people ask, if you, if you catch Rachel Burkey on the street and ask her about this landscape and why it's successful, she will tell you all of those same things. And so, um, we have made no, uh, it is not a secret, um, what a great investment this landscape is and, um, through our partners and through a lot of hard work and increase in our staffing, we were able to, I think we implemented a hundred and eighty percent of what we said we would get done in the first year, um, which positioned us very well to compete for money this year. Um, and so, um, we're looking to, to continue to get things done, to reduce the risk around communities, but again, it's not, it, it's not something we do on our own. It has a whole lot to do with, um, you know, all of you and the strength of our partnerships. That, that is really what's singing the praise. The governor's work, uh, task force that came over here and, and people left and they still talk about it. This training landscape is known far and wide, um, because of, um, all of you and the strength of.
Is it multi-year or is it?
It's one year.
One year.
Now, um, there, the funding next year will be a little different. Bill and Earl and all of those things, they, they have a shelf stock and it's an election year, you know, I just, but I can tell you for this year, that's what we have and, um, so we'll, we'll be looking to invest that money on implementing, um, Pilot. We'll be looking at implementing High and Palm. We'll be looking at, um, some planning for Big Ranch and some planning for, um, this North Trinity County project for implementation at Trinity Camps, um, you know, all of those things and all of that good work that needs to be done. Uh, more cleanup work in the August fire footprint, in August Phase Two and August Phase One and, um, we also have the twenty fifteen, uh, uh, reforestation that got burned up again, so we're gonna clean that up. So there's, there's a lot. Um, so one of the things for the agenda for next year, uh, next year, next month, next meeting, is I'd like to kind of go over our, uh, the five-year plan of kind of where, where I think the areas are that we're gonna go. Um, and I can give you the, the, the Cliff Notes version, um, and I'm, I'm, I wanna hear what you guys have to say, but in general, um, the, the five-year plan is focused around communities and it's focused around all of the communities, so, um, as you know, we're doing, um, High and Palm and then Big Ranch around Burnt Ranch because of that fire shed. Uh, then, uh, North Trinity County, um, our planning team on the TRMU will move from Big Ranch when that's done over to, uh, around Hayfork. Um, then we'll look at maybe that Daloma area and then, uh, Post Mountain along, along Highway thirty-six, so. Um, that's kind of what we're thinking and we're really focused on those communities and those critical fire sheds. Um, we do have some stakeholder meetings coming up that are specific to the landscape and those meetings are going to be, uh, February sixth in Hayfork and these are not, these are stakeholder and partner meetings, so they're not, uh, public meetings. Um, they're, they're, the people who are going to be side by side with us are in the trenches with this, however you wanna figure that out. Um, we'll be inviting, uh, T-Pod and BLM and, uh, Cal Fire and SPI and Trinity River Lumber and all of you are invited. Um, so all of those folks that are right in there with us getting work done will be invited to these meetings and I know you wanna know what the meetings are, so the meetings are gonna be, and you'll be getting a letter, um, I apologize if you haven't gotten it yet, uh, February sixth at Hayfork from three to seven. And that'll be at the VFW Hall and that will be for, uh, just to make sure, that'll be Kristen, Lark and I will both be at that one. Um, so that'll cover the Mad River, uh, uh, piece of the equation plus, uh, the South Fork side. Um, we reveal two fifteen, so February fifteen, from three to seven. And that'll be also at the VFW and then, uh, Willow Creek, uh, February eighth, from two to five thirty. Willow Creek, February eighth, two to five thirty.
Oh, okay.
I tried to put them later in the evening, just so if people work, they can, you know, or if people are, since our partners have a full day of work anyway, they can catch it at the end of the day. Um, so that's, that's my big news. I should have left with that, Jerry, then maybe the, I wouldn't, the folks would have been less. Um, but I'm, again, it, it, it would be, I, it's not lost on me that it's, this has been a long time coming and for those of you that have been on this collaborative group, that have kind of been through the, the pains of Pilot and all of the, are we making a difference? We're putting all this effort in and nothing's getting done. Um, you know, I, I, twenty twenty-four will be the year of implementation, um, especially with the funding levels we have and the NEPA we've completed. Um, so I'm thrilled to say you should plan on a lot of field trips to look at, uh, post-harvest activities and, um, and see equipment actually at work in Trinity County, so that's, that's probably the big news I have. And I totally stole the thunder from anyone on the Six Rivers, so, sorry about that. I'm sure you have some questions.
Larry's got his hand up.
Yeah, I heard you say a meeting in my neck of the woods. I, I didn't catch the date, though.
Yep, February sixth in Hayfork from three to seven and you'll get an official letter. I just wanted to give you the heads up because it, you know, by the time you have three Rangers or four Rangers review a letter, it takes a bit to get it out the door.
All right, Jerry, do you have a question?
Um, this is actually for NRA. I was wondering what happened on the EBA part of Ross. A COVID coming, there's supposed to have been a meeting since the last.
I know what you're talking about.
That was, that was on the agenda. Um, I didn't know what it pertained to, so I didn't follow. I, I asked. Um, I don't have additional information on that, but are you talking about?
It's a covert thorn coming down Stony Creek.
I know what it is, so, and Sarah knows what it is, so I imagine that's gonna go up the top of the action items for us to follow back and, and.
That's one of those, another example of those kind of follows.
Yeah. So.
There was a, we didn't really address that this last, like, last week at the rec. Just, there, there isn't any new information.
Susan, tell Ross we're sorry.
And if I get more information, I can send Ross an email.
Okay.
Yeah, we know it's on the list.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments on, uh, Sarah's or Tara's report?
Yay.
Hey, off the hook.
Yes.
Okay, uh, we've already gotten our NRA report. Monique, correct?
Yes, yeah, sorry, went early.
Not a problem. Jim, with, uh, Six Rivers, you've got something for us? Is he still with?
He is. Yeah, I'm here. I just had to, uh, figure, I'm used to, uh, doing teams, so I had to remember in Zoom where the button was done, mic, unmute myself. Um, I do not have a report prepared, to be honest. I thought I was in another meeting until last night and then I found out I was gonna be in this one and I'm having, uh, Bronson Dillard, our, um, forester cover the other one, so. Um, I can tell you that we also have been, uh, successful with some hiring. Our, uh, front desk person, some of you may have met, Max Epstein, um, had a degree in archaeology and we've been able to successfully transition him now and he will be our new archaeologist. Um, and our rec team is also filling out with both, uh, seasonals and, uh, we converted one of our seasonals to, uh, year-round position, converting two of the others to, uh, permanent thirteen and thirteen, so we'll have some stability. And, uh, we had a, a very successful year with YCC last year. We're in the process of, uh, um, getting that all set up, uh, so that hopefully we'll have funding secured for the next couple of years for our YCC program. Uh, some of the other stuff, I, I will have to leave for, uh, Kristen to update you on. Um, if you have any questions, I may know the answer. Um, otherwise, I've been trying to take notes the whole meeting and I'll make sure I update her on everything she missed.
Very good. Thank you, Jim. Any questions for Jim?
Really tired.
I just wanna say thank you because I will let you know that the Mendocino and the Six Rivers have both been on the landscape, helping us get our burning done. So thank you for the support and, and, uh, wanted you guys to know we are prioritizing the landscape and, and working across boundaries.
It, it's interesting that you mentioned about just being in a public place and dealing with the details and all of that.
Uh, Joseph and Susan Power just. Okay, so. No other questions, comments on Six Rivers? Very good. So I see Susan, uh, Joseph, you joined us?
Greetings.
Greetings, yes, welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Do we have anybody from BLM? We do not. Do not have a BLM, uh, representative today. Okay, very good. Moving on to other items, so the rec committee.
Uh, we covered Minersville, which was like the primary thing that we discussed.
Yep.
Um, we talked a, a lot about trails and sort of general updates and things like that, but do you have any specific?
No, no, it was a fairly robust trails report, uh, probably much more, uh, info that we received in the past.
Robbie Thorpe was very, uh.
Oh, yeah.
I have no doubts. I have no doubts. Yes.
Yeah, that passion definitely came through, so that was good. So, yeah, no Minersville, I think was the principal, uh, uh, topic of interest and so Monique did a fabulous job answering questions and, you know, deal with some pent-up frustration that, uh, uh, we can all appreciate with guarding that project, so thank you very much. Okay, any other rec committee? Susan? All right, not seeing any?
Oh, I just wanted to mention quickly.
Yes.
On the LaGrange Bike Race and there's a NEPA going on for that because we want to include the whole, uh, Weaver Basin Trail System in our five-year permitting, uh, process. So that's in the works and I just got a message from the, uh, Forest Service today that they're on it, so thank you very much.
You're on it. Wonderful, you know, we know you're on it, you're on it.
Maybe if I got like helmet cams for the bikers, I could solve the camera problem too. Figure somewhere on. Thank you, Susan.
Later day. All right, Kelly, RCD.
Um, I'm gonna pass to Bethany to open up, uh, with right now, if Bethany's available.
Yep, um, Monique gave my biggest update, which is that we got that CCI Forest Health application in, um, for Bowerman Trinity Camps and, uh, associated private land projects. I'm also starting on an application for a BLM funding opportunity, um, that would potentially help with additional funding for stewardship work up on the harvest parcel, um, in the Weaverville Community Forest. There's been a lot of concern about the standing dead timber up there, which could be quite expensive to deal with. Um, so we're looking for additional funding for that, um, as well as potentially for some partner-led NEPA work to do a DNA on some additional Weaverville Community Forest, BLM land. Um, other than that, we're proceeding with, uh, getting things ready for that harvest, looking to do that through a stewardship mechanism, so funding can go back into a stewardship account specifically for the community forest. Um, there's been some troubleshooting with their forester, but he's. There's been some troubleshooting with their forester, but he's getting us through all of that. So looking to do that harvest this year. We have heard back from Cal OES on the Large McConnell Foundation Private Lands Project. We're in kind of a holding period with them while environmental compliance is completed, but they got back to us with some questions. So that's a good sign that they've. Looked at it and we're hoping to proceed with implementation on that project this year. Other than that, we've got eight fuel staff on right now. We've been burning a lot with partners, which is great. And we're also looking to scale up our technical forestry crews from one to two this year to help with. Additional timber prep and continuing to help fill that hole with forestry tech hiring at the forest. So. Hopefully working on some, some of those big Forest Service projects as well. That's about all for me.
All right, thank you, Bethany.
Yeah, thank you, Bethany. To add on to that. We also have a crew on that's doing some work within the Weaverville Community Forest. There was some funding through the stewardship agreement that we identified as, and, and, and some line items for deliverables of doing. Hazardous tree. Abatement, I guess you could say, along the trail system within the basin. So we have some of our guys out following some of the standing dead. You know, mortality trees that we've been encountering in the, particularly on the eastern side of the basin. So we're putting a lot of those down, cleaning up some of the trails, getting, now that we've got some. The snow is kind of melting off, we're getting back up to deal with some of the trail work that has been. Needed now since with, with as much rain and rain on snow that we had last week and things of that nature. So. And, and largely though, it's, it's just sort of abating the bigger trees that will potentially fall on the trails anyways. So we're putting them on the ground in a safer fashion than. And being more proactive about it instead of, instead of getting calls and seeing on this book lists that there's, you know. This trail's blocked or that trail's blocked and needing to do logouts and things like that, which tends to be a lot messier process anyways. So. We've been working on that a fair bit. And the other big piece of news, which I'm hoping Randy Paris will address, has to do with. A, a joint proposal, a pre-proposal for the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation. It's being spearheaded by the Watershed Center and. That I will, I guess defer largely to Randy to discuss, but. There was a pre-proposal that was due yesterday that I understand went into National Fish and Wildlife Foundation. And we should be hearing about that. Soon. So I think that's basically it for us right now outside of. But Bethany already reported, so okay, I'll toss to Randy at the Watershed Center.
Kelly, last question on RCD.
Yes.
I don't know if it was in my notes or in the minutes, but there was supposed to be a meeting or a gathering with Caltrans about tree mortality. And Jill, my notes, someone said that Jill was going to be involved in that conversation.
Yeah. We, yes, I think you're right. And I haven't followed up on that through the winter and the holidays. So that was on my list of things to do. So I will make sure to make that happen.
Do you need me to just wait for you to reach out or do something to prepare for that?
No, I'll, I'll reach out and try and get some things set up. I'll get a poll out so we can start to get a date together that works for everybody. Thank you, thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
Okay, Randy, you're up. You with us, Randy?
Hello, yes, I am. I'm so sorry. I don't know. I'm having technological difficulties today. Just one of those things, I guess. So, yeah, I'll kick off with the NIFWIF proposal that. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, good, thank you. So we submitted a pre-proposal to the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation. And the Forest Service works in partnership with them and both the Shasta Trinity and the Six Rivers and. The region and other forests around the region put money. Kind of specific line item funding for different tasks that the forests were hoping to accomplish. In. Areas around some of the wildfires that we had across the years twenty twenty and twenty twenty one. So we thought it was a great opportunity to look at the Upper Trinity. The RCD and the Watershed Center have been working on assessments. Well, through BOR and the Sierra Nevada Conservancy for the Upper Basin. Of course. You all know that the river complex burned around Coffee Creek and there's areas that are part of the Cardelta fire area. And project planning. So we really took a lot of those different pieces. Of current project planning around Bowerman and Trini camps. And then the fire areas like the river complex and Cardelta. And integrated some of the language of. You know, wetland restoration that the Klamath Meadow Partnership has been working on. There are road issues up there. So we really tried to be comprehensive and reach out to the partners, the RCD. Sierra Pacific Industries, Trini County, the Noral Muk. To kind of be all inclusive in this proposal. And that's what we characterize for NIFWIF. I do think we'll hear back kind of quickly whether or not they would like us to. Submit a full proposal. The full proposals are due in March. And I think they're going to have a rather quick turnaround. So. Awards will be executed in May, I believe. So that's kind of exciting that we don't have to wait. For extensive periods of time. I'm wondering, I think those are all the high points. I'm not sure if people have questions. I'd be happy to, if there's any specific curiosities, be happy to try to address that, but I think that's a good overview.
I would just add to that with regard to the NIFWIF proposal that we've met with the Forest Leadership Team. Rachel Burkey and Carrie Otto and Tara and Sarah had a discussion about this Upper Trinity proposal. It's, it's, it's kind of multidisciplinary. It's, it, it has fuels reduction aspects to it, roads improvement aspects to it. Water, you know, as Randy mentioned, both Watershed Center and the RCD have been working on this Upper Trinity's kind of. Watershed assessment for the past couple of years and we're on both sides, we're kind of wrapping up some of that work. Have, having identified, you know, water quality, water quantity as important things, Beaver Dam analogs. You know, wet meadow restoration activities. And this, this particular proposal will address many of these, you know. Of these areas of restoration and conservation that we could be working on. And the one, the one that it lacks is, is recreation, considering that the bulk of the car, the bulk of the river complex was in the, the. Trinity Alps. It, it does address things like reforestation and things of that nature, but not necessarily directly recreation. So. But the, the ask that, as I understand it, we were, it's, it's, it's an opportunity that affects. Seven fire sheds within Trinity, within California. There's, there's meant to be five awards, anywhere from five to fifteen million dollars. And the thought is that there's a lot of work that needs to happen up there. So I know that it actually, my understanding, just from a, a text that I got from Nick today. Was that it ended up having to get broken into a couple of pieces. But that they, that the total ask that we were intending to go for was, was fifteen million dollars. And so. Like Randy was saying, we, it has a fairly quick timeline. So that'll, we'll, we'll know about how that's going to be moving forward. The water, the team at the Watershed Center and that, and our folks here at the RCD will be working collaboratively to, you know, if, if we're asked. We're kind of assuming that it's kind of a slam dunk. So we're actually intending to get started with the budgeting process. Even prior to, you know, getting a, you know, the, the announcement that we're accepted to move forward with an actual full proposal. So we'll be building. Some project based budgeting information and stuff like that, which is probably going to be fairly complex and fairly extensive with those kinds of dollars involved. But, but our intent is to be, you know, getting ahead of that curve and trying to make sure that we can make that March, that March twentieth deadline. So. That's, that's kind of a little bit more information about how we're moving forward with that. And we, and, and by and large, the Forest Leadership Team was very supportive of us moving forward because this would have impacts on the TRMU, the Shasta Management Unit. On the northern, the northernmost part of the county as well as the national recreation area. So, so we're, we're excited for this opportunity.
So process wise, you have to be accepted on a pre-proposal before you can submit the act.
The pre-proposal is like a two-page, you know, narrative, basically that, that sort of is, we're, you know, trying to make that as compelling as possible. It has, you know. To do a lot with, you know, the work that's gone before and, and the partnerships that we've built. You know, and, and as Randy was mentioning, you know, with the, the tribe, the. The forests, the, you know, the SPI component of it, the private lands, the fact that it's the Watershed Center and the RCD coming in together on this. That we've all, we've already been building a lot of this background. Momentum for it. So we, we have a, we feel strongly that it's, that, that will be asked to move forward into the, into the proposal phase. So it was basically just like a two-page narrative and a dollar amount. That we sort of plugged in for that and, and then when we get into the full proposal, it'll be, you know, be much, much more detailed. And then competitive grant opportunity.
So. You know how many applications there will be accepting from pre-screen?
I, well, like I said, there's seven different landscapes, but five awards. So we're the only. Proposal that we're aware of, like within, within the, with the Trinity landscape.
It was good.
So, so they are, there's good potential, yep. We think of all those things as being like part of the, you know. All of those things together, taken in total, kind of give us a really good opportunity to move forward. And as Tara was mentioning, like, you know, we are sort of. In a very unique place, you know, as far as like when you look across the state and the region and the, and, you know, like the west, really that. We're doing things here that are not, you know, widely being done in other places. So because of that, it makes a compelling argument that. You know, this would promote, you know, that work and move that work forward in a way at scale. In a way that hasn't been seen kind of too many other places. Would you agree with that, Randy?
Sure, yeah. I, I will say one of the things that we found out as we dug into the NIFWIF proposal. The request was actually less than specific about some of the details that the Forest Service had asked for. So I do think the evolution of the proposal, you know, responded to the task that the forests had in mind for. The money that they had contributed as part of this effort. So. You know. Things evolved as you work on the proposal and find out the detail and, you know, it was an interesting process, I will. Put it like that. And so we, we did also put another NIFWIF proposal. Together for the Lower Trinity because there were some projects on the. Eastern part of the Six Rivers and the western part of the Shasta Trinity and it, it didn't make sense to lump them all together. So that's what. Kelly was talking about that it, and Nick had talked about that it became necessary to split them apart. Because it really was. Fairly specific funding that the Forest Service had for these different projects. Anyway, so we're definitely excited to get on to the next thing and hopefully they let us know. As quickly as possible so we can do all the things that Kelly was talking about. And I will also say, I don't know if you mentioned this, but that Forest Health proposal for the Upper Trinity was kind of specifically crafted to. Act as match, work in the same area as, as NIFWIF. At a higher level, Cal Fire and the Forest Service are working together between these NIFWIF proposals and the Forest Health. Funding this year. So. Hopefully there's, there's a really good foundation for successful proposals here.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up, Randy. Larry, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I, I was curious at the beginning of the meeting, you mentioned it and now Randy just touched on it again. Did you, did I hear you right? Did you say RCD was proposing to apply for a Cal Fire Forest Health Grant for six million dollars to do thirteen hundred acres? Is that, did I hear that right?
That's correct, yes. And, and it's for doing service work primarily, the, the, what we're proposing is for doing service work on the Bowerman Ridge Project. As well as the Trinity Camps Project and, and as Bethany mentioned earlier, a couple of private pieces. That had to do with tying in the, the checkerboard pieces within the Bowerman Ridge Project and then some of the access to the Trinity Alps. And, and around the Lake Forest Estates. Subdivision.
So when you say service work, I, I assume you mean fuel reduction, but I'm not sure.
That's correct. Yep, the, the, the fuel reduction portion of the NIPAs that were done for those projects. Outside of the green timber component and, 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 and to supplement the ability to get more of that acreage completed as planned.
All right, any other questions, Larry? There we go. Any other comments, questions on? Watershed Research, RCD. Looks like we're good to go. We are running a few minutes behind, so we'll try to move this along. So facilitation team, Kelly, we got anything?
Nothing outside of what we already talked about at the head.
Yeah, I appreciate the feedback. So we've got some homework, you know.
Yep.
We'll roll our sleeves, get to work.
Yep.
February sixteenth, field tour. Got anything?
I'll kick it to the group. Is there anything that you guys would like to see on the, on the Shasta Trinity? There are certainly some areas that. You know, I'm, I'm happy to go to the woods. It's, it's gonna be probably a little cold. So we, these ones are always kind of tentative. So any requests from the group?
Not seeing any, Tara.
All right, so it's on me. So we're going to Disneyland. Okay, all right, I will.
Be determined.
TBD.
Agenda building, any, Tara gave me an item, so we'll, we'll put that as a standalone, that five-year.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll, next meeting, if it works for all of you, I, I'll bring some maps and kind of go over what we're looking at tentatively for a, a five-year program of work. Certainly always open for your input. You're going to see big blobs on the map. They're just, that's the point that they're at so far is focusing around those communities. Another potential agenda item would be. Some joint trainings that we're, that we're looking at. The Forest Service has been trying to open up our trainings to our partners. So last year we did timber sale prep. This year we're looking to do timber sale administration. For when we have a spa and they're working with a. They do a request for proposals and so we hold the partner accountable to the NIPA and to our agreement of the spa. And then the partner holds the contractor to the contract that they have with the partner. So. Making sure that people know how to, how to do timber sale administration is going to be important. So we're going to add that. making sure that people know how to, how to, um, do timber sale administration is going to be important. So we're going to add that as well as fire inspections, how to, um, inspect equipment and what the fire precautionary measures are. So everyone's on the same page there. And, uh, potentially some roads. But, um, I do want to let the group know and especially you, Kelly, that, um, uh, there are some new tools, NIPA tools that are, are being shared with us that, um, will increase our capacity to work with B L M, for instance, for, uh, for federal agencies, the ability to, the way that we can do decisions together for, uh, acres of overlap or tiering to their decision on national forest system lands. Um, fortunately, Joe Rodarm is, is, uh, a former B L M employee and a currently our ecosystems coordinator, our environmental coordinator. So he does all of our planning. So, um, he can maybe address that. Um,
Fantastic.
Yeah. So we'll make sure that we, we share that out.
Great news. Okay. Any other agenda items that anybody has that they'd like to see on our next meeting?
Cameras.
Yeah, that's a standing one.
Okay. Just bring them some.
Yep. Till we get them done, we'll, we'll keep, we'll keep it on there. Yeah. Same with, uh, probably, uh, Minersville. Seems like there's ongoing interest there. So anything, uh, beyond what we already have on the agenda? Not seeing any? All right. Thank you all very much for your participation today. Another good, good discussion.
Thank you, everyone.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Tom.
So what, um, February field trip, what, did we get one in last year in February?
Uh, last year's February was, uh, the Weaverville Community Forest. We sort of visited around space one and three.
That's right.
It was kind of a combined with, with the Weaverville Tour Steering Committee and there's a lot of crossover in that group anyways. But it was, that was, that was what I remember us doing. We were concerned we weren't going to be able to get up there.
Thanks for, uh, thanks for taking me outside. I appreciate it. All right.